What time is it? Are we gonna call a meeting order? Seven eighteen two thousand twenty-two is special session. And I got two items on the agenda. One of them's a executive session affidavit. I think all we need to do right there is just sign why we went into executive session the last time. I think there's nothing else need to do with that. The other thing is to purchase that equipment for the road department is to mow it.
Mr. Allen brought those colors.
I did brought something, look at pictures. Bushog not a great model, but it was the only one they had. We give idea what he was looking at.
And the paper together is that splotched report that shows you where he's at as far as monthly payments that are already coming out. If we went from the splotch and his balance and then the balance of the T-spots is at the bottom on the road department splotch report.
He really can't finance any more payments to come out monthly for splotch because he's right there at the limit. Somewhat over, somewhat under.
So actually, he's actually three hundred seventy-eight dollars over by year.
That's on the average estimate month. Yeah, that's his payment, but I mean, there's some months that he gets fourteen thousand, some months he gets twelve thousand. But we did the last six months, we averaged it out and it come out to be thirteen thousand.
And the new John Deere and the service truck and those are just estimates because we haven't started counting them yet.
Material, Dodge is right there. You got it all figured out? When do we think or anticipate the USDA for the other stuff coming through?
So what we're waiting on, I got the letter from Ms. Linda and we have to have the auditors audit for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. We have to give them a copy of that. We have to give them a balance sheet and a summary. And like I said, we've got that, but we're waiting on the audit, so we can't do anything until we get it out.
When would that be complete within the month?
And then we have to approve the budget in the budget period. So it all hinges on how quick we can get that budget approved. If we, if we keep on, because like we're already halfway through the year, it's probably gonna be March, like the trucks were February, March. Depending on how quick we can get the budget. Y'all gotta approve the budget, we've gotta get them forms to them. And that's what I'm saying. And then they have to go through, then we have to still have that, that meeting with them. And it's just step after step. So I mean, it could be anywhere from now until the end of the year. It just all depends on how we quick, quick we can get the audit forms and the budget. But I mean, it's a guarantee. I mean, it's pretty much done. It's just, we gotta wait on it.
You're looking at five or six months probably.
Probably, yeah. And I did go down there and look at that mower that Andy's got. And it's just, I mean, he's welding on top of wells. I mean, it's, it is, it is in very bad shape.
How old is it? Do you know how old it is?
About fifteen years old.
Fifteen years old.
So he needs it pretty quickly?
Well, I talked to him today again, and he told me he had both of them running now, you know. Didn't go out at any time, but they were both running now for a change. The other mower got a gearbox that's been winding on it for I don't know how many months, but it's still cutting. And it's not anybody's bad as the one that does it. Of course, it's not old, just, well, it's about thirteen years old.
Pretty old for a mower.
Like I say, I've got y'all the different quotes, all the way from a Rhino twenty-one fifty, which they do not recommend, up to the Rhino forty-one fifty and the Bushog thirty-eight fifteen. It's supposed to be the same equivalent. This, this is the same company, it's just they own two different brands. And then three different prices from three different John Deere dealerships. And if you look at this sheet here, that's the summary that tells you basically when they'll be available. When I talk to them, I mean.
So the twenty-one, the twenty-one fifty is not comparable to the forty-one, to the forty-one fifteen to thirty-eight fifteen?
Yeah, it can only cut two inches, up to two inches.
Yeah, it's very lightweight.
Yeah, that's what they said. It's, it's, it's just that what they had available. But, but like I say, if we do go with the forty-one fifties, it's gonna be sixty days plus. And, and I ain't knocking anybody, but you see what happened with that motor right there. I mean, you really don't know if you're gonna get it in sixty days.
I talked to Randy this morning. He went and ordered two of those forty-one fifties last week. He wanted to get them in, you know, and if we go with them, he'll have them.
But those are your dates. That just kinda gives you the, the, um, what timeline you're looking at.
But I personally, I like to trade, yeah. Yeah, I personally, I like to keep business local if we can.
Oh, yeah, I'm all for that. I mean, that's what we wanted to do anyway, to keep business local.
Yeah, we bought those trucks, we bought local. You know, these people pay taxes here.
Who's got the mower, the forty-one fifty mower in stock? Anybody?
Uh, nobody. That's a special one.
Who's got smaller mower in stock?
Uh, that's the one out of, it's in Donsville, but I guess it's that Blakely outfit.
Sunset out.
Sunset out, yeah. Which they were higher, if you look at those, that John Deere MX seven, they were the highest one on that, on that quote.
Now, all three of these are local, correct?
Well, it was Donsville, Bambridge and Coquelin. I'm sure that Coquelin, if you wanted an MX seven, I'm sure they could get you one.
Yeah, they, they were probably one of them and, them and Bambridge was the same price on the MX seven.
Has anybody talked to Andy to see what this people's on this line?
I just know, he just said he needed a mower. And that's the time, you know, he just had one, and it was on one leave.
That's what he told me too.
Yeah.
Doug done, Doug done called around here. Decatur County's got like seven mowers total. They got two big ones and they got, uh, five of the smaller ones. I ain't even recommend, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, I ain't even recommending the bigger mower. I don't, first thing, you're gonna spend as much repairing the mower down through the years, the life of the mower is just about as the mower cost. When first things they ever got right there, me and Charles Musgrove kept up with them too, and they've been long gone. And you done bought, by the time mower was war slam out, you done bought the mower again. It ain't nothing but a maintenance nightmare. And they running, them other counties is running them smaller mowers. Only advantage you got with the bigger mowers, you can reach out there close to the fence line over there, get up under a tree limb.
Or cut in the ditch, cover that there. Fifteen foot more, you can let it down into the slope of the ditch instead of trying to ride that tractor on that slope.
And if you rode out there in my district, that's what you're gonna need. Because those, especially the Oak Hill Road, it's just covered over the road.
So if Andy says that, time they make around, that's around eleven hundred miles that they put. The mower, the right away back, you know, using the good thing for the mower.
But we got hooked the tractor this morning, I mowed down and it's probably a quarter of a mile worth of mower. Took about thirty minutes to mow the ditch down there. You go, you, you got more speed and you ain't dragging the mower in the dirt. Now, I ain't the only one setting up him, but I argued against this from that first day they got them bigger mowers. And I, I got one, I'm out trying, if you ain't mowing on level ground, you, you looking to tear the mower up.
Well, can you cut the ditches with the other ones, the smaller?
They did it for, for, I know since they'd been tractors in existence, the convicts used to do it a long time ago. All they had was a mower that went behind the tractor.
Look at the amount of fuel though you're gonna be burning going back and forth.
Yeah, but you making more time. I'd take two of them mowers right there and cut more grass. I done operated the equipment, I know, I done operated it all my life. You take two of them mowers and mow more when you can with that wide mower that's three times as wide.
I just think you backing up doing that.
How much you ever, how much equipment you ever operated?
Quarter bit, quarter bit. Forty years, quarter bit. I took peanuts, I fly peanuts, I mowed, I run combine.
Have you ever owned one or you ever bought fuel for one?
Yeah, I own a tractor with a mower right now.
Well, I ain't the only one setting up him, but I, I ain't, I ain't recommending it.
My thoughts on it would be is, I'm not talking about our employees, but it takes a pretty good person to run one of those and not tear it up. You could put a less experienced person on a smaller mower and it would probably run longer. The mower would probably last longer. You know what I mean? Like, you, you could run the small mower. You couldn't run, you couldn't run that big mower, because like I said, you got to, you constantly got to be folding it and watching it up, not hitting nothing and warping it up. I mean, I'm not saying we don't need a big one, but I mean, we got one big one. I mean. And I mean, apparently, apparently you gotta think about money. We don't have the money either, so I mean, you gotta think about, that's gonna be the next thing. You ain't got the money to buy it.
We got plenty of money at T-spots by now.
Yeah, T-spots, the only exception to that rule right there was to put in the fueling station which complements anything to do with the roads and travel. That's the reason for that right there coming out of there. T-spots needs setting back to do the roads and only the roads. You don't need to be buying the equipment out there, because if you start that, you're gonna deplete it, because you're gonna be running out of both of them. And that'll be, that'll become a habit. And then you ain't gonna have the money that that right there was actually set aside for, to do that. That's one of the main reasons it got voted in. You don't need to be buying equipment out of there.
Well, I'm just looking at buying the paperwork and do the little payments. Because you already done loaded up on the regular splotch.
So you were asking about the USA USDA grant, right? And that we could pay, we could use that to pay for this, is that right or no?
The USDA is, a different tractor, a different mower, it's all approved. And what it is, is the USDA grant basically gives you fifty thousand for every hundred thousand. And I think that was a hundred and eight thousand. So we're gonna get the fifty thousand off of that. We're still gonna owe, what, fifty-eight thousand? But I think with the tractors that we were gonna trade in, it was gonna bring us down to about thirty, fifteen thousand, something like that. So we will go ahead and take care of that with what we had in the splotch.
So you're gonna need to sell the tractors after you purchased it, instead of trading them in, because we traded them in, that's one of the things.
Yeah, we were gonna, we were gonna sell it outright or something, how we were gonna do it. But that's a totally different mower than what we're talking about.
So we've already approved, we've already approved that deal and it's, and it's just contingent on us getting that audit and a tax return. So this would be a totally different deal that we would start. Now, it might go through as quick, but it's gonna be the first of the year if we did this. Does that make sense?
It does, it does.
So if he needs it right away, I mean.
That's, I guess that was my next question. Does he need it right away? Or is there something we could apply? I mean, I'm just asking, I don't know, I'm just asking.
I mean, if we applied, you're, you're looking at sometime next year, first of next year. So I mean, we would, we would still be in the, if it tears up, tear it, if it doesn't, I mean, you just never know.
But you kinda, you kinda two months out on getting one anyway, kinda, you know.
I mean, I'm just trying to look at.
And, and so whether the money we're looking at, I mean, to get it, we're not gonna use T-spots.
That's the whole catch. He got the money, he got the money.
So it ain't gonna hurt us to use T-spots one time?
If you start using that T-spots, like you said, you, if we used it for that, we'll use it for this.
Well, if you use it one time, just purchase one more. I don't see no, no harm.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I don't see, I mean, if you use it one time just a person more, if that's, if he needs it.
You start dipping into that, it's gonna become a habit.
Well, it becomes a habit if you make it a habit. You gotta make it a habit before it become one.
And it's got to pass, it's time to continue on.
What tractors has he got down there that he's using? Do you know what kind, what?
He's got number three oh three, one of John Deere, just got make new top on it. No cab, they running it high gear it must have, and they get road gear, but they getting by with it.
How old is it?
It's an old one.
And what's the other tractor you got?
The other one is an old limb cutter tractor. It's got a cab, air conditioner on it. And I say it, uh, he got the tractors running pretty good right now. You know, I think the tractors ain't no, no real big issue if they quit tomorrow. But if we can wait and get that grant, save a lot of money. And same thing with the mowers, I really think that everybody need to talk to Andy and get his opinion on this thing about what he thinks he needs. Because he the one running the show.
Absolutely.
He the one that's responsible for getting it done, or if it don't get done, then it comes down on top of his head. So that would be my suggestion, is that everybody talk to Andy and see what he says, what he thinks.
Well, we know what he thinks already, we gotta talk to him. He wants, he wants one of these mowers, I mean, that's what he wants.
Well, he wants, wanna do the job.
So you already talked to him, you already know what he wants?
I mean, I don't know which one he want, I just know that he was telling me before he got the other one.
Forty-one fifty.
Yeah, forty-one fifty.
And so on this quote, there's also a tractor. Are we looking at that now or not, just the mower?
Just the mower. Just one highlighted.
Gotcha.
I'm pretty sure that's what we approved last time though, right? That tractor and that mower.
Pretty much, same, about same thing that we did with the last year's.
Okay, okay.
I was just still on the, and Andy, if he know what he needs, he the one out there working.
So they don't need to get nothing right away, because it's not gonna hold up. All right, what y'all wanna do?
Are these two the same? That one and that one?
No, no. That's a seven foot lift top of this, you don't, yeah, that should be the same.
Okay, and there's a difference there, okay.
Me, I wanna go with forty-one fifty from plant ag, they got a little bit.
And it's local.
Yep.
How you gonna pay for it?
I suggest people that are T-spots, you pay for it.
Well, if it went anywhere else, I was gonna pay for it.
Like at my, you would do like you do at my house, you got the money, you don't get it.
You know, taking it around thirty-five, probably that one on T-spots. You're not gonna miss, but you're not gonna use the money so that to buy that piece of equipment.
Yeah, but he's, he's got that promised out to payments. I mean, you ain't just doing away with payments. I mean, it's, it's broke out right there.
Bottom line, he need a mower. We need one.
You got sixty thousand dollars set aside splotch, that's, that ain't, that's accumulated money.
That's rainy day money.
That's the money that they already accounted for. You don't need to get it out of T-spots, I mean, it's done.
That's your pay, that's your payment.
That's right.
So can we get it out of that?
You got sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, you can get it out of there, it'll be about half of it when we gone though, so. Yeah, you can get it out of there, it'll be about half of it when we gone, so...
Well, you're not gonna do any more payment this year. Your payment's done, done. You can't wait for thirty thousand a month.
It, it don't matter, you relying on the, the, the money building up. And it, it don't matter what month it is, you're gonna, you have to use it in the next year and you just don't, you, you taking away from that.
How much longer do we have on these other payments that are coming out?
They're, they're kept. Pretty new motor right there, so it is talking after several years.
You're just continuing with...
That's a rotating thing now.
Did you get to the end of the lease, you...
That's that time, remember that? And we just redid the lease or whatever.
I don't know about the component, we'll have to check on it.
You can say yes now, it's no problem. You just, if something else comes up, if I had to have a hard, a hard note on down the road, I mean, be, have something else come up. I mean, I'm...
Yeah.
Cause the Splot money, if you use, which I'm, you know, I'm just selling the sixty thousand, now that all these payments coming out, um, it's not gonna be able to build up like that again, the rate.
Right, right. It's kinda like rainy day money.
Mm-hmm, gotcha.
So like, he's, he's, I guess he's maxed out now, so that, that number ain't gonna get no bigger. It's not, it's not like drafted.
Yeah, we paid for the, um, that last little dump, the used dump truck, we paid for that. Just paid for it and didn't buy it as an out of Splot, so there was...
And how much was that? You remember? Twenty-two thousand?
So that's where it was a little bit higher than that.
Yeah.
Well, at least they ain't got no payment coming out of it, paying for them.
Well, what are we gonna do? I said, I said...
I'm, I'm prepared to build a plant hag and then we'll get it, we got two mowers ordered. We can take one of them that gets in, you know? Or they're not ordered, he did not order them for us, they decided to order them and get them on, or get them in.
So he'll have it in two months?
Yeah.
Your mowing season gonna be over by then.
Well, what else can I think?
I mean, I, I don't see the point, I mean, committing to the, you ain't gonna, the money, I mean, the money ain't gonna lead you to the mower that gets in, but I mean, you... You making a, making a commitment that you, you can make next spring.
Yeah, I'll have to table it down till we get this in rent money straightened out. Andy says he's running, so maybe we can keep them fixed together.
Y'all don't wanna get one of these little mowers and trade. The horsepower requirement's less, the, you, they maintenance free, other than the bearings and the tail wheel. I mean, when the mower goes over, when the tractor goes over the driveway, the mower's gonna pick up and go over the driveway too. You ain't gonna be worried about working the wings and this, that, or...
The smaller mowers just cut out the tires, so they don't have to look out there.
Well, do we have a smaller mower local? No, truly?
You can get one of these mowers right there.
Yeah, they can get those. You see what I'm saying about somebody less experienced?
Right.
So like, if you got one out there and there's a tree out there, you got to be dodging. This way they just looking right at the tire, so if they run over it...
Well, again, what I say, we're not out there working, Andy is, so Andy know what he needs.
Yeah, I should just talk to Andy, and Andy...
I mean, we're not out there working.
No, you're right, right.
I know what he's telling me, but y'all ain't even talking to him.
What, what to get, but until we talk to Andy and Andy know what he needs.
All right, is it gonna get tabled? I mean, if one of the big mowers tears up, this little mower will be running. It will be running continuously, unless they deliberately, unless somebody does like they done out there, where they throw the engine block off in the ditch. Something like that right there, some obstacle like that that they gonna run over that you can't see in some grass. Unless they run over something like that, you ain't gonna have no trouble with the little mower. And the little mower's gonna be running when one of these big mowers is down.
These big mowers, they ain't been that, uh, Craig ain't been that big of an issue till lately.
I signed some checks in here a while back right there, and there was thousand something dollar worth of parts and there was mower parts. But I mean, I, do whatever you wanna do. Y'all want tabled, it'll get tabled, but we need to, we need to move on, we're gonna do what we need to do, Henry.
We're up there tabled, yeah. Till we talk to Andy, and then by yourself talk to Andy.
All right. Other than signing the, uh, executive session affidavit, and we went into executive session for personnel and came out of executive session with, uh, no decision made. So, and that's, all I need to do is, uh, I guess, um, somebody make a motion for me to sign that affidavit.
I'll make it.
Second.
All in favor? All right, motion's here. Table the purchase of the road department equipment and need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Second.
All in favor? I agree with Jared.
Did he sign this or you just you?